I call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices so that we can conduct business and stand for the invocation by Councilperson Pacino.
Instead of our normal invocation, I'd like to read you this. On Thursday, people all over America will celebrate Thanksgiving. While we enjoy the company of our family and friends, let's also join together in saying thanks for another year of good health and good cheer in a free country of goodwill, as well as thanks for the strength to bear any burdens of our own and those around us. City Council gives thanks for the guidance and help to serve our city, to work for our residents, and make this a safe, prosperous place to call home. Please enjoy your holiday. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom.
All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium in front of us. Please state your name and address before giving your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. That would be myself. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. Your first bell means you have 30 seconds left, so please wrap it up because on your second bell, unfortunately, I'm going to have to stop.
Mary Ellen Wilber.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Mary Ellen Wilber. I am residing at Four Wood Street in Batavia, New York. I'm coming here and I want to thank Gino Jankowski, Rosemary Christian, our city manager, and our city assistant manager, and Chief of Police, High Bush, and Assistant Chief of Police, Crossit, because they helped me understand the situation which occurred at 209 Liberty Street on the 18th and 19th of November, which impacted my brother David Zanghi greatly. And the reason I say greatly is I want you all to understand, and I'm going to hope that I do not get emotional, because this is my brother. This is a man who called Batavia his home for nearly his whole life, went away and conducted business, and came back when he was injured, and came back because I said, "Come back to your home, and we, your siblings, will help take care of you." And I expected him to live peacefully and calmly in the city of Batavia, which at one point was known as the community of opportunity, but is no longer known as that community. But I'm here because my brother, thinking he was going to have a nice peaceful day in his apartment, was disrupted by the behavior of the persons upstairs. And in that disruption, he complied with the requests of the police department, only to find that his home was destroyed. Not damaged, but destroyed. He no longer can inhabit that home. He is displaced, and he was displaced by the actions of the police department, despite having to inform them that the tenant upstairs could not access his apartment, could not access getting out of the basement, and was shown that. And I have given you pictures of the inside of his apartment and the damage done. I have shown you pictures of the padlock on his door, and that it was not opened by the tenant upstairs to access his apartment, nor is the basement, which is covered with a rippled piece of steel, could not be accessed to exit the basement. So, in saying that that person that resided, Mr. Wolf, was in my brother's apartment, was misinformation, and we do not understand how the police could think that they could throw canisters of tear gas into that apartment to get that man out. Whether they knew or not was a misnomer. They had access. My brother had given them the keys to walk into his apartment. Instead, you'll see a door that's covered, a screen door that's kicked in because they wanted to kick it in to get into the apartment instead of using the keys that they could go in. For whatever reason, they decided to throw tear gas into that apartment, covering his furniture with the caustic irritant that covered his furniture, which was just paid for and purchased as Ashley Furniture. If you look at that furniture, you can see that it's of good quality. They went and threw tear gas into his bedroom in the rear of the house, which could not be accessed again, as I say, covering his bedroom. And you see it, I know the pictures aren't perfect. I took them with my phone and had them developed. But you'll see a crucifix and a rosary. That's the crucifix and rosary that was on my mother's casket. It's now covered with the irritant, the caustic irritant, that I'm not going to remove because I'm ill. My two sisters, who are both ill, one is a kidney transplant recipient who had cancer, the other has third-stage renal disease, as do I. My brother is a kidney dialysis patient awaiting, hopefully, a transplant one day. So, we are all older. I am disabled. We cannot do this work. My brother lives on a very small Social Security pension. He has paid his rent. He may now receive HUD after waiting for years. He just applied. So, all of this damage, I have to say with gratitude because of the city managers' outreach to me and the city assistant managers worked with me this morning and talking to me and saying that agencies have stepped forward to try to help me in assisting my brother. I do not know if they will, but there is a great deal of stuff inside the house. That's why I gave you those pictures, to have you see the amount of furniture. That's not showing what he has in the basement, nor the garage. The other pictures I've given you are to show you Jackson Street. The residence in front of, the side of Jackson Street School is Mrs. Pastore, who owns the Polkadot and has owned it for years, over 60 years. She is over 90 years old. Her sister, Mrs. Syracuse, who was a nurse at St. Jerome for well over 40 years, lives in the other house. She is 95-plus years old. They cannot access their driveway due to the irresponsible behavior of the people parking there illegally, some leaving their cars running, darting in and out of traffic with children. Well, her daughter comes in about every six weeks, Mrs. Pastore's daughter, from Colorado to help her mother, and has reported to the police on several occasions, these illegal parking people. I cannot believe that one officer told her that he ran out of tickets and never got more tickets to ticket the cars. It shows ineptitude on our part when we do not respond to citizens appropriately. I think we need to look at our behavior. I think we need to look at response. I know that in other cities, they use rubber bullets when they have people that are offenders. I'm not going to question tactics, but I would say that in certain situations, we look to look at things a little bit more responsibly and a little bit more closely in response time. That's all I'm saying. I think we need to look at situations that impact people that have, are not offenders, but are victims of circumstances. I think we need to be level-headed. I think we need to look at the south side of Batavia carefully, because the impact of other people's behavior on the citizens of the city and Batavia are impacted greatly by people that never resided in the city of Batavia.
You have to, can you please just wrap it up?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Look at what the impact has happened to the people that have lived here, paid taxes, and owned homes. I ask you to consider us before you consider people that have not paid taxes for decades. Thank you so much.
Counsel response?
The, the property that Mary Ellen is referring to is on South Jackson Street. It's right across the street from Jackson School. That's been an ongoing problem for years. The last time I spoke to anyone concerning it was Jason Malino, and he did send officers down. They had them remove the cars from, by the side of the driveway. These are two great people, and I think maybe we should have our police, if they find that that driveway is blocked for those two people, have them ticketed. There's no ifs, ands, and buts about it. The other thing I'd like to ask is, what organizations are helping? David? Does anyone know? Marty, do you have any information?
We do have some information, as a matter of fact. I've talked a little bit. The police department's talked some. Our assistant city manager has really done a lot of work on it. Genesee Orleans Ministry of Concern, as I understand, the Red Cross Salvation Army, Genesee Justice, and there's a new thing called 2-1-1 that actually is a one-stop-shop kind of a thing. You can call into it and, based on whatever your needs are.
I think that's 3-1-1, actually. That's what I was told. Maybe I was told wrong. We need to verify that before the news puts that out there, but... 2-1-1?
2-1-1.
I was told something.
Verified it with the police chief. It was 2-1-1.
Okay.
And there's also been discussion with the homeowner, you know, Mr. Preston, and there, I believe there's some others, you know. We'll be, of course, poking around with some others as well to see. But that's, those are some initial connections and discussions that have happened.
As far as South, South Jackson, if I'm not mistaken, across from the school, that's all no parking there, because originally it was made no parking so that the kids were getting out of cars and running across traffic. So, to prevent that, we, we made that a no parking zone, so there shouldn't be any vehicles parked across from Jackson unless that's changed.
That's changed in the last couple of years. You're right.
So, either they're just disregarding the no parking area or...
Absolutely.
It's still, it should still be no parking in that area.
Right.
And they have the new area where the bridge was and all that. That's employee parking, I thought. I don't know if there's people parking up in there, but from that bridge west, there was supposed to be no parking on South Jackson all the way up to Max Pies and so on. That whole side is supposed to be not parking.
Right, right.
It needs to be better.
And they want to block the side stage, not block driveway.
Not block driveway. That's right. Mrs. Syracuse.
So, yeah, so if we could, you know, just kind of verify that and maybe make people aware of it at shift change or...
You're not talking about one or two cars. You're talking about maybe 20, 25 cars that are down there.
We have a crossing guard down there, so if that person sees those cars parking there, a quick phone call, can alert, and we could go down and address it. And once they're ticketed, one, the word will spread and people won't go there.
When you hit them in the pocketbook.
No, I know.
So, if we could, it, it must manifest itself each new generation of parents that find that, hey, this is wide open. I could park right here, and they're obviously disregarding the no parking zone, so if we could just look into it.
I wasn't done.
Go ahead.
Anyways, our police department, our men and women, basically, their hands are tied nowadays, okay? There's a lot of things that they really can't do. There's cameras all over and everything else, and our society has become so liberal with some of these things, it's unbelievable. But they do the best they possibly can for everyone, anytime. When you need help, you call them, and they're there. They risk their lives every day to keep us safe. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Marty, do you feel confident these agencies will pitch in and help out?
We're feeling pretty confident, yes.
Good. Okay, thank you. Marty, is it not true that after we have a major incident, whether it be a fire or anything, you have a, a meeting and you debrief amongst your department heads?
Yes.
And you look at what we can do better and what we could, what we did right and so on?
Yes.
And that's, that is going to happen with this incident as well?
I've actually, I've actually had, you know, a personal debrief with the chief and the assistant chief, so I've already had the advanced debrief.
If anything deviated from best practice, you'll be corrected.
Yeah, and there was, and we looked at and did discussion and analysis of best practice, yes.
So, I'm not saying that there was or wasn't. I'm just saying we go through this every time anyway to make our...
It's standard, it's standard procedure.
So, that we improve our, our response to any type of action.
Right, exactly.
This is, we're treating this the same as we would any other major incident, correct?
Correct.
Anyone else? Okay. Communications?
Nothing today.
The next council conference and business meeting together will be held Monday, December 9th, 7:00 PM, City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. The part-time judge, Dern Rogers, as you know, was elected to be a full-time judge. He takes that office as of January 1st. So, as of December 31st, he has submitted his resignation, and you've received the timeline in the email from the assistant city manager, I believe, showing the process. I believe you've already announced the opening, and we're accepting applications.
Correct.
And by the 6th of December, we'll have those sorted out. We will discuss in an email, maybe send an email, what's a good time for you, and we will come up to a time on that 6th, and we will do interviews, and then we will appoint the next part-time judge. All right? So, that is the procedure. We're on schedule to do that. Things have been announced, and we're just waiting for the applications, and on the 6th, we should have a, a conclusion to it. Any questions or concerns on that? Today, we have a public hearing for, to close out the CDBG grant for the Brooklyn Avenue Can I have a motion to Mr. Canelli, seconded by Mr. Veely? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Anyone signed up to speak in the public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to speak that forgot or didn't know they had to sign up? You're more than welcome to speak on the issue of closing out the grant for the Brooklyn Avenue project. Any council members, any comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Mr., Ms. Briggs. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Do we have a presentation for the deer?
They are here, yes.
Of course you are.
Yeah.
That was because of the pedestrian way, the sidewalk project.
It's because of capital reserves and transfers of capital projects. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is because of the capital projects that they've, that we put money into.
The town is, I've been doing this, get out of the equity, port holes for the city. Because people are asking, it's me, six eggs all over the place.
Oh, the sidewalks, it's not...
Ross, they're looking at you. He's looking at you. He's going, where is Ross?
Hi, my name is Sue. I'm based in the Albany office of DEC, and I work with communities all around the state who are facing problems caused by an overabundance of deer. And with me is my colleague, Robin, who's in the Avon office. She's the big game biologist in this area, so she's your local resource on this issue. I'm going to start by briefly mentioning some aspects of deer biology that are very important to understanding this problem. White-tailed deer are highly adaptable. They're the most abundant large mammal in North America. They live in a wide variety of climates and habitats, and what they like best is edges between forest and more open habitat, because that's where they find the most food. They have a very high reproductive rate for a large animal. Under ideal conditions, deer populations can double every two to three years. So, that means that if there's plenty of food, an average of 30 to 40 percent of the deer in a population have to die every year to keep numbers stable. If mortality is lower than that, the population will grow. In most places, populations are controlled by hunting and predators, but in urban and suburban areas, there usually isn't much of either of those. So, the largest source of mortality in those areas is vehicle collisions. There are over 70,000 deer-vehicle collisions a year in New York, and although that's an appallingly large number, it's nowhere near large enough to keep up with deer reproduction. So, population in these areas continue to grow. People often think that there are deer in their neighborhood because development has pushed the deer out of places where they'd rather be living, which is a reasonable supposition, but deer happen to be a species that just does really well living with us. They're in our neighborhoods because we've created excellent deer habitat. There's plenty of food, a lot of it in our yards and gardens. There's plenty of the edge they like because we like patches of forest mixed in with our lawns and golf courses, and there isn't a lot of mortality. So, deer can reach phenomenally high densities in urban and suburban areas, and they can cause a lot of problems. These are the major problems that people usually bring up in communities that are, that are facing this issue. Different communities tend to focus more on one or another of these problems, depending on their particular situation, but they're all serious issues, and you're probably familiar with all of them. You may be less aware that deer also cause serious ecological damage. In a lot of places, they're out of balance with the ecosystem. They essentially eat all of the plants on the forest floor, so they reduce plant diversity by destroying habitat. They reduce wildlife diversity, and they also threaten the future existence of the forest because when a big tree dies and falls, there's nothing to replace it because the deer have eaten all the baby trees. So, this is a growing concern all across the Northeast and the Upper Midwest. So, moving on to what communities can do about this issue, the first step is, is defining the problem, and you might think that the problem is that you have a lot of deer, but it's more helpful to think about it in terms of what the deer are doing because those are the things that you really want to fix. So, a problem might be that you have a lot of deer-vehicle collisions. It might be that you have a lot of landscaping damage. When you define those problems, then you can define objectives that relate to those problems. So, what level, what rate of deer-vehicle collisions would be acceptable to the community? What level of resident complaints about landscaping damage would be acceptable? That defining those objectives will allow you to assess your program as you go along and, and, and understand whether you're getting closer to where you actually want to be. Once you've defined objectives, then you can think about management options that might help you get closer to those objectives, and this is just a small subset. I'm going to talk more about options in a moment. Typically, you would use multiple approaches to tackle the problem from multiple directions at once because that's how you're apt to be most successful. Once you've identified your methods, then you would implement them. These are some considerations that might come into play. And then the final step is evaluation. How are things going? Are you closer to where you want to be? Are there negative side effects? Are there things that you want to change before you go forward? This is meant to be an adaptive process where you're continually tweaking your program to make it the best possible fit for your community, because deer management is a long-term commitment. It's not something you can just do once. The deer aren't going to stop doing what they do. They're not going to go away. Whatever you do, you have to do it year after year, otherwise you're going to end up right back where you started. So, let's talk about some of the specific options. Management approaches can be divided into two basic categories. Those that reduce people's vulnerability to the impacts of deer, usually by changing either human behavior or deer behavior, and those that get at the root of the problem by actually lowering deer numbers. These are some of the approaches in the first category. These can all be helpful and effective in certain situations. I would expect some of them to be a part of any deer management program. Tick by avoidance, for example, is something that we should all be doing pretty much all the time these days, but by themselves, these approaches are limited because if nothing is being done to reduce deer numbers, the population will continue to grow because that's how it works. The problems will continue to get worse, and approaches like these will be less and less effective. So, that brings us to population reduction. The simplest and easiest approach for a community is to take advantage of recreational hunting. So, we at DEC regulate hunting. We license hunters. There are deer seasons every year, and there are a lot of people who want to hunt deer. But they can only be effective if they can get into the places where the deer are. So, one thing a municipality could do to facilitate recreational hunting is to make land more accessible to hunters, to work with residents, to get, encourage them to allow deer on their property, to allow hunters on their property, or to allow hunters to be active on neighboring property, or to come onto their property to retrieve deer that they may have shot on a neighboring property. So, those last two aspects of permission can be very important in developed areas where lot sizes are small. There's a state law restricting how close you can fire a weapon to a house or other occupied structure. So, for example, for archery, you have to be at least 150 feet from a house to shoot a bow unless you have permission, but you can be given permission to shoot within that setback distance. So, if residents are supportive and they work together to give the necessary permissions, hunting can happen in very small lot sizes, and it does in some communities. Something the municipality can do to increase residents' comfort level with the idea of hunting in the community is to run what's called a controlled hunt or a managed hunt. And this is just a way to formalize the ability that all landowners have to set restrictions on hunters that they allow on their property. So, in a municipal-controlled hunt, individual homeowners decide whether or not they want their property to be included in the hunt, and they work together with the municipality to come up with a set of rules that, that applies to everyone who's participating. And then the municipality administers the hunt. They supervise the hunters. They apply the rules, enforce the rules, communicate with the property owners to make sure everybody's comfortable. Or sometimes, there's a local hunting organization that will take that administrative burden off of the municipality if everybody agrees. That hunter organization will, will do the coordination and the supervision and the communication to make sure that everybody knows what's going on and everything goes The municipality can also apply to us for a deer management assistance program permit. This is free. It supplies additional deer tags that you would distribute to the hunters. This would allow them to shoot more female deer than they would otherwise be allowed to, which is important for, for reducing population size. Some communities find that hunting is not sufficient to allow them to reach the objectives that they've defined. So, the next step in that situation is culling, which is the term for shooting deer outside of a hunting context. Culling requires a permit from us, and the permit authorizes things that hunters aren't allowed to do, like using bait, shooting outside of hunting seasons, shooting at night with lights. These are all things that make culling more effective at removing deer. Culling can be done, but you can hire professionals to cull. You can also use volunteers, so essentially, local hunters who would act as agents on your cull permit. And some communities choose to go one direction and some go the other direction. There are also a couple of specialized techniques that might be authorized on a cull permit, depending on the situation. If there's a small, densely-developed area where shooting deer just doesn't seem feasible, you might get a permit to capture them and kill them using some method other than shooting. You might also get permission to sterilize them in that small area as long as there's either hunting or culling going on in the surrounding area to lower the overall population because sterilization by itself isn't effective enough to lower a deer population except in an isolated situation like an island or a fenced compound where there's very limited potential for untreated deer to move in from outside. So, this is a very quick overview of the options available, and we would be happy to answer any questions now or later and to continue to work with you as you go through your planning process and, and come up with a program that, that you feel is right for
I have a question. What does it mean dough-only or earn a buck?
Okay, so... Okay, so female deer are the key to population reduction. Shooting more does is more effective than shooting more bucks. So some communities, if they have a controlled hunt, will say, "You're only allowed to shoot does if you hunt within our city because we really want to focus on does to get the population down." But a lot of hunters really want bucks because they want the antlers. So you can also set a rule like, once you shoot two does or three does, then you get a tag for another buck. So that gives them more incentive to keep going.
Okay, thank you.
The 100, the 150 feet to 500 is for a bow, correct?
150 feet is the setback for a bow, 250 feet is for a crossbow, and 500 is for a firearm, a gun.
Doesn't a bow travel more than a mile?
Not typically, no.
I don't know, about there, okay. So what happens if the hunter misses the buck, the deer?
It goes into the ground.
Yeah, typically in urban areas, you're correct. Typically, it's archery. Typically, they're up in a tree, so they're shooting down at an angle. And they're shooting at something that's very close. Usually with archery, it's within 20 yards. So if they miss, or if it goes right through the deer, it sticks into the ground, and it's never out of their sight.
Russ had a question.
Yeah. The deer problem's been a problem with Batavia for all of 10 years. And a lot of people have changed their landscaping to, you know, deer-resistant plants, bushes and such, so to speak. And, you know, you do, a lot of people put up with the, of course, the droppings of the deer. And then, of course, you have the tick. You have animals. They can pick it up. Humans can pick it up as far as the mind is easy. But now, the problem is that the deer are becoming aggressive. They won't back down. I'm the one that, I was chased by a doe. And then a couple of days later, my neighbor was also chased. They live right next to me in apartment complexes. And they're elderly people, most of them. And that's why I brought it to light.
That's unusual, but it does happen sometimes. People can be attacked. Dogs can be attacked. Often, if deer are getting that bold, it might be because somebody's feeding them, which is illegal and is also a very bad idea because it just makes all the problems worse. There is a state prohibition against it. The city might want to consider passing a local law ordinance prohibiting feeding because then you could enforce it on your own. And we have a community deer management guide, which you can download from our website that goes through in more detail all the things that I've talked about.
Well, we have that material for...
Jane, we actually have another presentation.
That material, the materials you just gave? Ask if we can have it for our committee.
Okay, next we have the renewal contract for prosec... Can you say, how do you say?
Prosecutorial.
Prosecutorial services with Genesee County District Attorney's Office. And George is going to put a little presentation on, a breakdown of how that... We're still going to need the PowerPoint. I hit it in my brain. It just didn't come out.
It's not a word you use very often.
I'm going to be using it 10 more times.
You'll have to now. Throw it into every sentence somehow.
Every time I see something like it's going to be prosecutorial.
Reminds me of a prosecutorial incident we had the other night. Very dangerous to have.
This is State Street.
I'm right over a mile to go. What? I'm right over a mile to go.
See here, that's State Street. This is Burke, Burke Avenue. You know where Burke is.
Oh, wow.
So I own the land between State and Burke.
Wow.
All this land. You know the Armory?
Mm-hmm.
It's up here.
Mm-hmm.
So we own all through this.
Wow.
And no, they won't hunt.
She will have it?
And we said no.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We obviously have the DA's agreement with Genesee County. It expires, the current agreement expires December 31st, 2019. It's a standard municipal agreement, inter-ministerial agreement with the county that we've renewed several instances because of the nature of the legal services we require, which is within the area of expertise of the DA's office to handle prosecution of criminal cases. So we've attached that agreement in draft form to the conference meeting materials tonight. But based on some significant criminal procedure changes that have been passed as part of the legislation coming out of the budget cycle this year, we felt that it was appropriate that we share with council and the public some of the intricacies of how the relationship is going to change and must change in terms of coordination because of what's been known as the discovery reforms that were passed as part of this year's legislative session. So basically, what I'm going to do, and then the chief will follow on with some comments about bail reform, is talk about some of the discovery changes and some of the proposed changes that the DA's have proposed to their office to integrate and operate in this new system that we have. So CPL is the criminal procedure law for New York State. And basically, what happened is the legislature passed and the governor signed a new form of Section 245 for the criminal procedure law. What it did is dramatically changed the manner in which criminal discovery is handled in New York State effective January 1, 2020. Basically, there have been a series of discovery procedures whereby, up to this point in New York State, discovery was conducted in response to requests from defendant's counsel. In the normal course of a proceeding of a case, after the case was initiated by arraignment, indictment, things of that sort, the criminal defense attorneys would request discovery. It'd be orderly. It would be in, within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, depending on the nature of the case, the seriousness of the case. That system is going to be out the window as of January 1. We now have under Section 245 of the CPL, what's known as automatic discovery, which means that the DA's offices in all the counties in New York State are going to be required to serve on the opposing counsel or even on the defendant, automatic discovery in a whole series of documentation, information, and materials within a certain period of time. Basically, this requires an open-file discovery from the DA's office, which means everything within the DA's office's file or within the control of the DA's offices, which picks up the local law enforcement agencies and their files, has to be produced as part of this automatic discovery process. So the timing on this is significant because it dramatically alters what law enforcement agencies and DA's offices in New York State are going to have to do to try to comply with these statutory requirements. It has to occur no later than 15 days after the defendant's arraignment. The other issue is, not only in a situation where there's a normal arraignment, but there's also going to have to be disclosure at least 48 hours before grand jury testimony so that the defendants and defendant's counsel are aware of that. In addition, so that there's full disclosure, the legislature requires that this be provided by the DA's office prior to a criminal defendant being offered a plea and having an opportunity to consider a plea so he knows what evidence is available or he or she against them. The statutory requirements are quite strict. There are very limited instances in which these discovery requirements may be extended based upon the volume of the evidence, circumstances regarding evidence not being available or within the custody of the DA's office, or ultimately by court order. I would respectfully suggest, though, that, given the nature of the statutory changes and the fact that New York State saw fit to do this, the courts are going to be somewhat reluctant to grant those extensions as a matter of course unless there's exceptional circumstances. So what we have here is a list of some examples of the discovery that's going to have to be provided. And there's ultimately going to be a discovery checklist that the DA's offices are working with. Our Genesee County DA's office is working with it. And it picks up a whole series of documents, information, and materials that now has to be not only compiled as part of the law enforcement agency's investigation file, but packaged in a manner in which it can be shared with the DA's office in a very short timeframe. So the DA's office has to prepare this and forward it within 15 days. The law enforcement agencies, including Batavia Police Department, will have to do that within three to five days or so so the DA's office has the ability to review it, compile it, and then distribute it to the defendants. It's not only the normal course of items and materials. And I will admit, I'm not a criminal attorney. I do mostly civil litigation, civil matters. But there's the types of matters in here that go beyond what I would say is the normal scope of discovery even in a standard criminal case. You've got expert opinion evidence. You've got written and recorded statements, not only of the defendants or potential defendants, but all persons with knowledge have to be shared. Electronic recordings. Electronic recordings may not be within the control of the law enforcement agency. In Genesee County, for example, it's not within the control of Batavia Police Department. It's within control of county dispatch. So there's a whole sharing procedure that's going to have to be implemented with some of these things as well. In addition, it picks up other matters such as body-worn cameras, which, based on the volume of body-worn camera information and materials for any given crime scene, could be significant. That material has to be shared as well. DWI cases, you've obviously got a whole series of information and documentation regarding the underlying equipment that also has to be packaged and shared. Now, this list is daunting. If it was, you know, if I was a criminal defense practitioner in a DA's office, it would cause significant concern to be able to comply with this. Because not only do you have to put this together and share it with the DA's office, but as part of the speedy trial reforms, the courts are now required to investigate of the counsel whether or not they can certify that the case is trial-ready, which means they have to actually ask that question of the attorneys in court, and the DA's office has to actually do a certificate of compliance stating that they filed all these matters with the defendants. So the obligations on the part of the DA's office are quite significant. I would say, as we've worked through this, we've had several discussions with the chiefs, the assistant chief, city manager and assistant manager. The DA's office in Genesee County has been proactive on this. They've been working hard to do some outreach with various law enforcement agencies. I've had several discussions with the DA and the assistant DA. They've actually done training. The DA has been excellent in providing assistance for various entities to understand what's coming down the pike in this regard. In fact, the first assistant DA, Melissa Sean-Freney, was actually over here today doing law enforcement training today as well as last week so that the folks on the line understand how this is going to relate to the cases that they are preparing, packaging, and ultimately filing. This is the certificate of compliance that I mentioned. It's significant in addition to not only the scope of matters that need to be picked up and certified too, but it's also significant from the standpoint of what the law enforcement agencies in New York State have to do to make sure that this filing is complete, thorough, and picks up all the discovery that's required in a timely fashion. Because if it's not, the court can impose a series of sanctions, which could range from simply preclusion of the evidence to extensions, to ultimately, depending on the severity, dismissal of the case. And frankly, if the court goes beyond that to find that the DA's office did this in bad faith and didn't share the information as it needed to, there's a possibility for prosecutors to be involved in a misconduct proceeding. So it's something that's causing a lot of concern on behalf of not only the local DA's office and law enforcement agencies, but also agencies and contacts around the state. I mentioned the staff changes that are being proposed. Basically, what we've heard and talked to the DA's office about is that there have been requests made of the Genesee County Legislature to make sure that there's additional staffing online. Because not only do these discovery requirements apply to standard, what we view as misdemeanor felony cases, but they also apply to traffic cases. So you could have a series of cases. In this instance, the city averages 1,500, 1,800 traffic cases and fractions per year. Those are going to have to be part of this system, subject to automatic discovery, unless and until the law has changed to pull that out, which means there's a need for a whole level of staffing to stay on top of that and be able to handle and manage the documents that are produced as part of those cases. So what the DA's office has requested of the legislature is an assistant district attorney, another one, a paralegal to help manage this process, as well as basically a part-time legal clerk typist that would be involved principally in assisting with some of these traffic-related matters. And there has been a request for funding for this position through the city-county DA agreement. The DA agreement is put forth in draft form with you. There's still some discussion and negotiation that has to take place between the manager's office and the county administrator's office. So that's subject to some further development. At this point, I'll turn to the chief to let him talk a little bit about that. But I would just note, the municipal agencies, the municipal associations have been on top of this. NICOM, as recently as last week, issued a press release and has asked for changes to this discovery reform. Among them, to make the discovery limited basically to the felony cases and only in an instance in which it's after an indictment. So it's not pre-indictment. So that there's limits as to how far this would cover and the number of cases this would cover to make the system more manageable for law enforcement and for DA's office. In addition, they've asked for basically an instance where this would, discovery would not be automatic, but certain information would be withheld based on sensitive information, information about witnesses and things of that sort would not be available, as it's automatically available under the new program unless and until there's a court order covering that and requiring it. NICOM has also requested that this system, which is going to go live on January 1, 2020, be postponed for six months so that there be further analysis and further investigation as to the impacts and as to the implementation. That request is being conveyed. Whether or not that's going to be considered by Albany remains to be seen, but it has at least been requested of NICOM. So I'll turn to the chief.
Dr. George, a question or a question?
Yep.
What happens to a witness that's not able to track down, avoiding, and then finally you find him after this 15-day? Is the DA going to be more likely to ignore that witness because he doesn't want to get sanctioned because of the delay? Or what happens in a case like that? You're not really, it doesn't seem like you're setting up an opportunity to find the right information because you're going to get punished if that information comes in too late. How is that a mechanism?
I would say there's going to be significant onus on the part of law enforcement and the DA's office at the first cut of the investigation to make sure that they're as thorough as they could possibly be. Because that's all going to have to be part of the package that's submitted. If there's a real legitimate good-faith problem... If there's a real legitimate good faith problem that they have tried, they can establish that they've done everything within their means reasonably to identify other people with information, I think they'd have a basis to explain that to the court, but if they just ignore it, I think there's a potential there for, unfortunately, the DA to have to answer questions to the court, or maybe not be able to comfortably file the certificate of compliance saying they've done everything they need to do under the statute.
You can't really find him, you know, there's a person who witnessed the crime, you're still trying to find this person, especially in a serious crime, and maybe they're afraid to come forward, and it might take more than 15 days.
It might, and, you know, the concern that's been raised by many of the associations, I can't speak for DA's office, but reading the articles from various locations around the state, hearing from NICOM as to their analysis, the bar association's analysis, there's going to be some analysis probably and ultimately some voluntary and voluntarily weeding out of seriousness of some of these cases, because just the volume of the requirements, the volume of the cases that are going to be part of the system. By example, just the vehicle and traffic cases that we handle through the city, you're talking about 1,500 to 1,800 cases on a given year, which would be subject to this process. You add in all the other misdemeanor felony type cases, and it's going to be very significant for each of these law enforcement agencies and ultimately the county DA's to handle the cases. So, there may very well be a falloff with some of the lower-tier cases because they just don't have the staffing to handle it.
That's my concern, is that they just don't arrest people, and the traffic goes down to almost nothing. It's not worth it to go through all this hassle, and you're actually creating an environment where you're turning your back on violators because it's just so difficult to do the paperwork. The other question I had was, what about lab work and stuff like that? That's not going to come in in 15 days. Is there an exception for that? I didn't see anything listed on any, like, you got cocaine or something like that, you might have a field test, you're going to need official lab approval saying, yes, it is this, or this blood, or this DNA, or whatever. How are, what's on that?
I'm probably not the best person to speak about this because I'm not handling those types of cases per se, but I believe that was part of the original checklist, that the lab results, lab certifications and so forth are going to have to be part of the package. However, if it's not reasonably available from whatever lab is handling that type of evidence, they just can't produce it. I think they're going to have to work with the courts, whatever court they're in, to establish that they're working as quickly and efficiently as they can with that particular lab to get the information and share it with the defendants within the, you know, reasonable protocols of that lab. The courts, I would suggest, probably are going to have to accept the fact that those types of documents and information are not going to be available within the windows that the statute sets somewhat arbitrarily. That would be my sense of it, but obviously, there's a lot to this process that's going to have to sort itself out in court and in practice as to how this is going to work and whether or not ultimately it's manageable.
George, what about the case where an autopsy has to be performed to determine if there was, for example, murder involved?
Again, same issue. I think the discovery checklist is going to be as it is. Whether or not that documentation and information is completed within the statutory window is going to remain to be seen, and I think it's going to have to be case by case, and the DA's office and law enforcement agencies are going to have to do their best to show there's reasonable good faith in terms of progressing those pieces of information and make them available to the defendant and defense counsel. I can't give you a timeline as to what that would typically be, but, you know, there's a lot, a lot that's required under the statute that I don't know that the legislative arm of the state really considered in practice as to how long it actually takes various of these pieces of information and documentation to go from A to Z to be completed. And again, the practice on this is going to be significant in terms of how the DA's offices handle it and how the courts ultimately enforce it because of what's available and what's not available within the windows.
So, George, I would say they're being kind. Maybe they absolutely knew what they were doing, and their purpose was setting this up to tie the hands of our law enforcement. I would hope that's not the case, but it certainly does look like they didn't do their diligence before they came up with this occupying plan here. That's enough. I'll let the chief speak at this point.
Thank you. To steal a phrase from first assistant district attorney, Melissa Sanfreeny, this is like driving on the left-hand side of the road. All of a sudden, you wake up tomorrow and the rules have changed. On January 1, 2020, we are driving on the left-hand side of the road in the criminal justice world. So, I'll speak real quickly to the impacts on your police department. So, effective immediately, the DA's office has required all law enforcement agencies in the county to participate in what's called the DMS program. So, it's a program where they gather all of the information that they're going to need for discovery, so they can get it out electronically to their counterparts in the public defender's office or criminal defense attorneys. This is something that we are opted in to do at this point in time, so we can kind of get ahead of the curve come January and kind of work out all the kinks for ourselves. As George had mentioned, there is a very condensed timeframe, so we must provide all of the information in a three-to-five day time period, depending on the severity of the charge. We must provide all case information on vehicle and traffic tickets, which is new, as George had mentioned, within 24 hours of the issuance of the traffic ticket. This has significantly increased the workload of our officers, our detectives, our supervisor and our clerical staff due to the condensed timeframe. Officers and detective are going to be mandated to complete all paperwork and supporting documentation on a condensed schedule, and what this equals is officers may be required to work overtime or may be taken off of proactive police patrols in our community to make sure that we meet these timeframes so we don't lose a case. Supervisors are going to be mandated to approve and correct reports in a timelier fashion because these things have to go through a review process and go up to the DA's office, and again, this may require more work, more overtime, or taken off the road completely to make sure they comply. Our detective bureau, who's in charge of all of our evidence intake and all of our evidence processing, is going to have additional responsibilities here as well. So, what this means is our detectives are going to have to work potentially some overtime to get that covered, or they may be unable to work alongside patrol to work on some of those other kind of lower severity cases that normally they would help out with when you have a complex investigation, the detectives get involved no matter what the level of crime it is. Our records clerk is going to have to comply with all of this, all of the, ensuring that the case information is uploaded to DMS as outlined in the timeframes given, and currently, our records clerk basically is in a part-time fashion. She works the front desk as well, so this means she's going to go to a full-time duty doing that just to meet those deadlines. And she's going to have to keep track of all of the information coming through, going back and forth, so when there is new information coming in at a later date, she can go back and make sure that that information's uploaded properly. And then our network connectivity and storage, it may become an issue as video files get larger and larger, and our network infrastructure must be maintained around the clock, basically. Not only is this DMS program for paperwork, it's also for any digital audio or video evidence must be uploaded. So, that's the good news on discovery. Bail reform is a whole nother thing. So, bail reform was the other kind of arm of this criminal justice reform. So, as of January 1, 2020, bail reform will take place. So, that means that basically, any misdemeanor or E felony crime, officer must issue an appearance ticket to the defendant. They cannot arraign the defendant unless there is a specific qualifying offense or there's specific circumstances that are laid out in the CPL to allow that to happen. So, these are just a few examples of what are considered qualifying offenses for the purpose of arraignment. Violent felony offenses, except for burglary second, which is burglary of a dwelling. Robbery second, which is the forcible taking of property. So, on January 1, 2020, if your house is broken into and there's no injury and the person is not armed, but they take your TV, Playstation, whatever that is, and we catch the person, we must issue them an appearance ticket.
That is so crazy. The whole thing is crazy by this governor in this state. What the hell? I mean, really? They don't want to go to court now, and you're now, we're going to give them an appearance ticket, and this is it?
So, the non-qualifying offenses, again, as I alluded to, is misdemeanor and non-violent felonies, and these are just a couple of examples of where an appearance ticket is required.
It's nuts.
Bail jumping. So, if somebody doesn't show up for an accord appearance, and they're charged with bail jumping, so basically, they don't show up on an appearance ticket, we lodge a charge that's called bail jumping, they cannot be arraigned, we have to issue them an appearance ticket. Resisting arrest. If we go to a gathering, say there's a fight or there's a harassment or a violation level offense that's occurred, but the person in question fights with the officer to get him into custody, we must issue an appearance ticket and let the person go. Vehicular manslaughter, I'm sorry, vehicular assault, menacing, criminal contempt, other than domestic violence. So, any domestic violence-related offense can still be brought before a judge for the purpose of an arraignment, and it completely eliminates police bail or station house bail. So, our officers and our supervisors no longer have the authority to collect police bail on a defendant to ensure that their appearance in court. So, there are a few exceptions to appearance tickets. So, if a person has one or more outstanding local criminal court warrant, you can take them before a judge. If a person has failed to appear for a court proceeding in the last two years, you can take them before a judge. If a person's been given a reasonable opportunity to provide their identification and they refuse to do so, you can take them before a judge. Again, if a person is charged with a domestic violence crime, if the person is charged with a sex offense, and again, domestic violence, if you have reason to believe that you need to take someone before a court to have an order of protection or protective order issued, you can take them before a court for an arraignment. And if the person is charged with a crime for which their license, driver's license can be suspended or revoked, they can be arraigned. But under this new law, bail consideration is the presumption of ROR. The judges are mandated to let the person be released upon the least restrictive method. So, if you do have one of those qualifying offenses to take a person before the court, the judges are mandated to let them go under the least restrictive method, which is either ROR or RUS, released under supervision. These aren't our rules, this is the state. Monetary bail is going to go away. At the end of the day, you're not going to see judges setting monetary bail. That is the reality of what your police officers, the police department, the district attorney's office are going to have to deal with come January 1, 2020. I will tell you that in ramping up to this, there's a lot of the stuff that we already do, releasing people on their own recognizance, releasing them in on appearance ticket whenever we possibly can. The court, city court, uses the RUS program a lot. The RUS program itself is staffed by a very small staff over at Genesee Justice, and, you know, their responsibility is very limited, their ability is very limited, I should say, in their actual supervision of the person. So, these are some of the things that we're going to be struggling with and working with the DA's office to kind of overcome over the next few months in preparation for January 1, 2020. As George alluded to, we've been, our officers have gone to a training today, we had a training last Friday as well, and this affects everybody across New York State, it's not just us. Yes?
I must not be, like, must not be as smart as it is in Albany, but what benefit is this? What is this trying to solve?
Nothing.
So, what we were told...
What are you trying to accomplish, is what you're trying to say?
Yeah, so, what we were told, and, you know, I'll let George jump in here as well, is this is supposed to create more transparency in the criminal justice process, as well as not incarcerate individuals that are unable to make bail. So, in other words, not punish the poor because they can't afford bail.
Good things.
You can't afford bail, okay?
What does that mean?
Yeah, the discovery piece, obviously transparency, making discovery available to defendants sooner rather than later, so they have information relative to the charges against them. I think there maybe was a consensus within the DA's office, some of the defendant's representation groups, that discovery reform was needed. There has been discussion and analysis that perhaps the pendulum has really swung too far on this, to the extent of what's required, the timelines of this required on, and also the fact that it picks up vehicle and traffic cases as well, because the numbers of those cases that are going to be handled by the various DA's offices in the 60-plus counties in New York State is going to be daunting. My understanding from talking to some contacts was that the vehicle and traffic cases were not supposed to be part of the initial law, it was going to be an exception, but the downstate really pushed for those cases to be included as part of automatic discovery. So, now it's there, there is some suggestion, and it's part of the complaints that many of the DA's offices are making, that this should not be part of the system if the system's going to require it, but, you know, there's no real path at this point for a delay or for that to be carved out before January 1. You know, the requests are being made, but I wouldn't suggest it's going to be something that happens too quickly.
Tell me this, are we the only state that's going to have these changes, or is California involved in it?
I'm really not in a position to answer that question. I don't know what the practice consists of in some of the other states, but New York State views itself as being in the cutting edge of some things. Whether or not we want to, we are.
You mentioned the reason behind this, the traffic cases. It totally doesn't make sense. You get a ticket, it says you went to a stop sign. What more discovery does that person need to be transparent about?
Well...
It's right there, and I'll forget the ticket, it says stop sign, it says the street you're on. Really? I don't understand why that's important to have. The DA will hold a packet with the key to the DA's. It's more than just a memory. It's a memory as for that information.
I got a pistol. I better start carrying it.
A waste of time.
Holy shit.
I would say current practice is definitely that most of those cases plead out, you know, various reduced charges, that type of thing, so to have automatic discovery is a significant step on the part of law enforcement agencies and the DA's office.
She's in the hill, buddy. Because that's what the hell's going to happen. It's going to be crazy out there.
Someone goes in the girl's house around 10:00.
Yeah. I know. I hope so. He's not going with that girl anymore.
Very disappointing.
Isn't it?
Chief, I have a question for you. So, in other words, if I, I just got to clarify this. If I run my wife over with my car, I get arrested, but if I run my neighbor over with my car, I get an appearance ticket.
Well, you get arrested either way, but it just determines on how you proceed through the court process, if you get to go to see the judge or if you get an appearance ticket.
But if I have my neighbor run my wife over?
Hypothetically speaking, we can talk later.
John, you're making me nervous over here.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do you a favor by moving on.
Mr. President, don't be nervous, I'm sure his wife will read about it in the press tomorrow, and the issue will be resolved.
You're done tomorrow, John.
I'm surprised you didn't say you better do it before January 1.
You're done?
Compact loader bid.
Council President, if I might, just because the agreement needs to move forward in December, we would just ask that if councils are okay with moving the basic agreement subject...
I got ahead of myself. All right, so, John made me nervous over here. As you saw in the agreement, there is blanks where the actual amounts are, okay? It's still under negotiation, so we can't really discuss that openly because we don't know where that's going to finalize. So, what I suggest is, we've already discussed it, we've seen the presentation, we know what's going on. I suggest we move it to the appropriate business meeting. When we get that taken care of, it'll be sometime before the end of this year because we have to, have to have this done. So, I suggest, are we in consensus to move it to the business meeting when it gets addressed and finalized? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, and I would just note that the 1819 agreement, the base amounts per year were $61,000, so there's going to be an adjustment to that, but that's still being finalized.
All right, so, we have to work that out. So, again, we have only 30 days to work that out because by the end of the month of December, we have to have this in place. So, you will get the final information, there'll be plenty of time for that to be announced and at a next council meeting, at a business meeting. All right, so, we're in consensus to move that forward.
As long as we get it 15 days before.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Got some good news on track loaders.
Yeah. Good evening, City Council. The last budget, we had programmed in the replacement of the compact track loader, which is used primarily where you see it is clearing the snow in the downtown area, things of that nature. We had programmed funds in there based on some estimates that were given to Ray Tor, was really the force behind that, and as we moved further into the investigation, we found out they don't make the loaders of that very similar size, and we were struggling to find units that would fit, especially on the south side of Main Street, there's areas that are very tight, and most of the units now are just, you know, about six inches wider, things of that nature. We only were able to find two units that would really do the job as required. as required. As Ray further met with several vendors, it was really discovered that we could purchase two units and might be much more efficient. It created a couple of, of advantages, one being the, the ability to utilize a lot of our existing attachments without having to purchase new ones. And then the second item is that the, one of the units that we have that was coming up for retirement is a, a really standalone unit for milling, and the larger unit that we are proposing to purchase would be able to purchase an attachment that would do that same job, so would be able to not have to replace that, that other unit. Along with now having two different units that would just offer some additional flexibility for work outside of snow removal, and during snow removal, the larger one would be used for actually the removal of the snow, especially on the north side, and be able to do it a little more efficiently. So ideally, we would not look to, to replace one unit with two, however, long-term, we think this will be a more efficient use of the city's resources, and the pricing on it was just very, very attractive. So we, we met with several different vendors, a local vendor, Jeva Farm Supplies provided the, the lowest cost as well as the highest return on the trade-in of the existing unit, and so we are recommending going with the purchase of two compact track unit loaders, a smaller unit that will work pretty efficiently, especially on the south side of Main Street, and the larger unit which will offer some larger flexibilities with attachments and be able to take the place of some other units as well. I would offer that typically, once we obtain units and, and get them in the shop and checked out, we do try to provide city council an opportunity to see these units and see how they work. I would try to do that when councilperson Canelli's not available, just looking out for his spouse.
Nobody gets run over.
Right, yeah, we, you know, maybe Mrs. Canelli would, would come, come in his stead, so.
Yeah. Now, question, this was, did, did we budget, like amount for this, so this is coming under budget, I understand?
Yes, that, that is correct. It is under budget. With the trade-in, it is under budget.
So, so that's, that's good news then.
Yeah, absolutely.
We get what we need and we're buying it local and, and a city business, right?
Absolutely, yeah, Jeva Supply right on Center Street, corner center in Eleg.
They're there for support and parts and so on if we need it.
Yes, absolutely.
Who's the manufacturer?
GEL, G-E-H-L. You see them, they're a pretty common name around, you see them quite often on, on farms. The smaller unit probably gets used a lot for, you know, fire, inside barns with stalls and cleaning that way, so, yeah.
Are these US-made?
I, I don't wanna, I can't answer off the top of my head. I believe they are, but I'm not a hundred percent on that, so I, I'm not a positive on the US-made.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now you have the seeker.
Yes, as council has been informed along the way, there's a recommendation-
Do we need to move that forward to the business meeting?
Yes.
Are we in consensus to move the track loader?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The council began the process of changing the zoning ordinance to allow for public storage, units be allowed in I-1 and I-2 zones. It has gone before the city planning development committee, and they have provided recommendations, which were then followed through, reviewed by council and forwarded to Genesee County Planning. They reviewed it, again, thought that the, they had no objection to it, thought it was an appropriate change to the zoning codes. And as this has moved forward through the, the change, the change in the local law, we're at the point now for a seeker review, which is the environmental review. In this case, it is primarily an administrative action, and so it is appropriate for the city council to take lead agency, they have to declare that, and through resolution, become the lead agency for that, review the, any environmental impacts, again, which are, upon our review of staff, are really nonexistent, environmental, because it is just strictly an administrative point for, for moving this forward. So the intent would be the council will review the, the seeker document and make a motion on a negative declaration at the next meeting.
Good.
Okay, any questions or concerns? So we're in consensus to move that to the next meeting for that process? Okay, that moves forward, and now you have the zone ordinance itself, right?
Yeah, so this would be the actual adoption of the local law, changing the zoning ordinance and, you know, adopting that law into, or, you know, being part of the municipal code and adopting that. So once the environmental review is done, that is really the last step, and then council can adopt the, the law change and it becomes the law of the land, so to speak.
Okay, any questions on that?
No. If you haven't been on Cedar Street lately, Guy Clark put up his building and it really, really looks nice. And then these buildings, the, the storage areas are gonna be next door, and it's really gonna enhance that area across from the county park.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
And this will help in any industrial zone-
I-1 or I-2, any, any of the industrial zones.
This will provide another option for that zone to be developed into this type of thing if somebody wants to.
Correct.
Okay, so we-
With a special use permit.
So we consensus to move that forward to the, I need that moves forward. The downtown revitalization proposal, the One City Center?
Empire State Development, I'm just gonna say at long last has provided the incentive proposal for the DRI project for City Center, AKA the mall. And actually, the timing is pretty good on this because we're just getting ready, I mean, we're just now getting ready to do the launch of the, of the feasibility study for the City Center campus area. So the timing is pretty good on that. It, it goes toward the portion of the mall that's, you know, the mall concourse portions that are, that we have here in the city. It can go towards some of the, for example, the portions of the roof, particularly on the, by the silos where we haven't, which was not included in the current bid, this can cover that type of work, it can cover work on, on infrastructure down there inside the concourse, it can deal with floors, ceiling, those types of things. And there's, and there are, and there is some flexibility built into that, so, so we are really looking forward to the feasibility moving forward. It's supposed, it has to be done by June of next year. This particular grant, the money, the work has to be done and the funds dispersed to the city by April of 2022. So there, even though it's, that's two and a half years out, that's still a pretty tight timeframe, so we're gonna be moving along on this. We feel pretty good about it, we're, we're pleased that they've, the state has come forward and released this for us, and we look forward to a good project. We do recommend you move this forward and approve it.
So basically, we're, this resolution is to file any necessary documents to receive the development downtown revitalization grant.
Yes, there will be several different documents that would have to be, some to be signed, I'm sure by the council president, some by the city manager, so the resolution is including both.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? So we in consensus to move this to the next business meeting? Okay, that moves forward. One thing I did notice before we close, I noticed that there's some kind of a tent around the Redfield Parkway, so they're working on that, even in the bad weather, they're fixing things up, so that's, they're doing what they can do. Just thought I'd pass that on, I saw that today. So if you would please take us into executive session?
Well, whereas Article VII, Section 1051H of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such a public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof, whereas Article VII, Section 1051E of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, and whereas Article VII, Section 1051F of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Otavia, that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second to by, Mr. Beely, call the roll, please.
Collins, Preston, Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Fia Housekey?
Yes.
Jane Housekey?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.